... plan actions you've taken, you have allocated $42.98 million toward these categories listed on this slide for the 2021 spending plan. As a part of our update for 2022, we reached out to the departments that were included in this spending plan and said, how much do you really think you're going to spend in 2021? I think we've all seen that processes, procurement processes, take longer maybe than we expect or expected at the time. So we're not spending quite as much as we thought. So what we're going to do now is walk through the various programs. I'll show you what the original allocation is and what we're asking to revise the 2021 allocation to as a part of your vote today. So public health response, one of the items you'll talk about on bid board today is temporary employment agency services. We have been paying for those out of COVID general funds. We are hoping to ship those to ARPA now that it will come to you for approval. So we will expect to spend 5.5 million of that allocation this year. County COVID protections came in at about 123,000. Recovery Connect, which is Community Navigators, you all approved that bid board item several weeks ago. The contract is in process and that will come to you. And so until we have that contract, we won't make payment. So even though the program is underway, we don't actually expect payment until early next year. Court backlog, this was for the DA, Court Sheriff Corrections, Regional Forensics Science Center and Facilities. And if you will recall, just over 7 million of this was for the work to redo this courthouse. Well, all of that is going through the competitive procurement process. We don't actually expect to spend that money this year. And you'll see probably not even in the first quarter of next year, other than design. And so the actual amount spent this year is anticipated to be closer to $300,000. For premium pay, you all had approved 20 million toward that through a cleanup process. Looking at all of the positions that had not received premium pay, we have learned that there were positions that were not included that should have been. And so we are requesting to increase the allocation to 21 million instead of the 20 million. You may recall that that second half payment of premium pay is coming out this Friday. If you approve this today, those additional employees would get their checks on the final payroll of the year in two weeks. For ARPA management, these are positions and consultants that are assisting us with trying to do the day-to-day work within finance and also in HR. We expect that to come in at closer to 580,000. We had 2 million in the contingency. You all did approve an urgent spending process. So for example, the East, I'm sorry, the Harry Street testing site was an urgent need that came through ARPA. We accessed the contingency for that and a few other incidental needs, we would access it for the premium pay. And so that would reduce the contingency to just about 890,000. So grand total, what we would ask you to approve is the 2021 revised plan is 28,437,223. So you can see how that breaks out on this slide here. And then jumping into 2022, at the same time, we ask those departments to tell us what they really think they'll spend in 2021. We also ask them to tell us for those same things, what do you think you will need in 2022? And do you have other COVID-related needs? To be fair, though, the way the leadership team settled out in making this recommendation to you is that we continue with the urgent needs that we already had and not necessarily do additional asks at this time so that everyone in the organization and also the community can compete for those additional funds. So what you'll see here are the exact same categories we talked about on the other slides for one quarter of 2022. This is what we expect to actually spend. The plan then would be to come back to you in February with a more comprehensive plan for the rest of the funding. So public health response at 4.2 million, county COVID protections at 82,000, Recovery Connect, excuse me, one quarter of that is $125,000. We would not propose to do any additional premium pay. I have broken court backlog into three parts because we do have one tweak. So you can see the DA Courts Corrections and Regional Forensics Science Center are just at 1.6 million. The sheriff's portion related to backlog is about 380,000. But we also know that the sheriff has had significant staffing issues. And so one of the proposals that he is looking to do is to install cameras and locks in his jail to try and do some, I guess, remote monitoring in those pods. And so this would be $225,000 to do some design work, to see what that would cost. And of course, they will work with facilities to make that process happen. And then court backlog, part three for facilities, we do, based on the presentation you saw yesterday associated with the administrative building, there is not a move planned in the first three months of the year. But we do anticipate that there would be some work needed at whatever lease site we go to to make sure the county can be on our network. And so that cost is included here as a part of that leased space. That is the only cost. There are no movers or lease costs at this time. Courthouse space remodel, design and plan review would be about 430,000. Again, part of the package you heard yesterday. And then we would hire that senior construction project manager, again to Commissioner Cruz's question yesterday, at 20,000. For ARPA management, we know that there is going to be significant time from our consultants in helping us stand up programs, stand up grant portals, and of course, our own staff. So we have estimated 511,000 for the first quarter. We have increased the contingency to 3 million. Again, as we continue to see how testing evolves in the community, we want to make sure that the county is in a position to respond if necessary. And so that contingency has been bulked up a bit, just in case that first quarter requires us to do something different than what we have been doing. And so that brings the total ask to 10.7 million. So if you were to add your 2021 revised spending plan to this 2022 first quarter spending plan, you'll see that we are actually less than what you had originally approved as a part of your 2021 spending plan. And that is shown if you have your handout. And again, this will be posted on the website, but that total is shown here at the bottom. So just, there are a few other slides that I included here that will just hit on just some reminders about how often we report on these and what types of things we're required to report. We have performance metrics that we are required to produce on an annual basis, also as a part of our quarterly reporting. There are certain expenditure categories, there are 66 categories that we must report in to the feds. And so we are being very careful to design our financial setup so that we can comply with this. We are, of course, tied to the uniform administrative requirements and terms and conditions that come with that, which in large part is the procurement we've talked about. So we actually are working with Wood O'Briens to do some additional training on those types of considerations, depending on the programs, projects and administrative things we do that we'll make available to commissioners and senior staff. So there's a lot of work happening behind the scenes, other than just the spending plan. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend that you approve this 2021 revised spending plan and 2022 first quarter plan.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Lindsey, for this update. I just have a real quick question. I know that there's been some concerns around the money not being spent and the urgency of some in our community, especially small nonprofits and small business, how the money will be allocated. And so I hope that, you know, the State Spark Committee is working and we're working. And so how do we, I know that we don't want to duplicate funds, right, obviously, but who pulls the trigger first? And so I guess that is my main question, you know, when is the Spark Committee meeting next? How are we keeping abreast of what they're doing? And how can we quickly support our community because there are folks out there who need it? And so I appreciate you answering those questions. The Wichita Beacon, they ran that article. So I guess, do you have any thoughts on what's going to happen at the state and how we're going to get these things out quickly?
Well, I think our goal is to be in a position to roll out county programs as early as April of next year. Of course, you have the Community Navigator program that will be up and running within a matter of weeks that will connect people to resources. So just because the county itself isn't necessarily operating a program to provide that relief, we are going to provide resources to the community to ensure that they can get access to what is available today. In terms of the state, I know their final listening session is this Friday, I believe, the 10th. And so that is a virtual session. And so I would imagine that as soon as that's completed, those Spark Committee staff will be compiling information for them to review. And we know the legislature convenes in January. So I'm hoping that early in that process, we'll at least get an idea of what their priorities are and where they're planning to head so that we can start developing through that February, March timeline, some programs that will fill the gaps as opposed to potentially duplicating. And again, just to reiterate, we know that with CARES, the rules changed a lot. And that wasn't necessarily the county's decision. In fact, it wasn't the county's decision. It was put on us by the Treasury. We want to avoid doing that this time. We don't want to change rules on people midstream. And so the way to do that is to wait for the final rule and to see what those parameters are that they give us so we don't have to do that to folks. So that would be, I think, my response to folks who are concerned about the timeline.
Well, and just like Jim earlier mentioned, his 2,000 pages of that bill, I can't imagine how many different rules you've had to read and understand. So I appreciate your diligence in making sure that we are following the guidelines as often as they change and hopefully they won't do that too many times. So appreciate the work that you've done on this. Thank you for this report.
My pleasure. We have an awesome team.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on me real quickly. First of all, you did a great job presenting this. And I think I'm generally supportive of everything that's in here. I don't have a strong opinion, but I do have a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
On the PPE issue, I'm surprised it's such a small number for 2021. Do we have, what's our status? I mean, I see on our dashboard, we show green on everything. But I'm curious, are we connecting to the hospitals to find out what their status is and that type of thing? Are we just looking at our own needs or is this greater than Sedgwick County only?
I will have to defer to Russi or Julie Simpson on the, what connection we're doing. But I will tell you, we did have a healthy stock of PPE going into this 2021 plan. And so we did not need to purchase as much.
Okay. Hi, Julie.
Good morning. Good morning. Julie Simpson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management Director. That is for the county agencies, the government agencies that we are supporting. We are, the hospitals are getting through their normal chains, their own PPE.
Do we know their status?
I don't off the top of my hand, but we can certainly get that for you.
Please reach out to them. I've heard through the grapevine that they're in what's called 1135 battlefields, it's called battlefield nursing, 1135 waiver, which means they're potentially reusing some PPE when that's not ideal. I don't know if that's true or not, but I've heard that rumor. And we're showing green status on everything on our dashboard, but it makes me wonder because our numbers for 21 are quite small and we see a ramp up in 2022. First quarter is actually more than half of what we spent in all 2021. So it's almost surprising to see the low number 21 and the higher number 22. Can someone explain that?
We're kind of projecting based on what current events are with the Omnicron and just, we're kind of beefing up to make sure that we have ample additional supplies. We have a very healthy stock. There hasn't been any issues communicated to us from the hospitals of having any shortages. But to get back with you on that, we'd have to find out where all of that came from.
Okay. Thank you for that answer, but please reach out to them and find out if they need help or not.
Okay.
And then on the, on the Community Navigators, what exactly is our status on that? You said that we are, where are we in the process on this Community Navigator effort?
Well, Brent is actually going to come up to the podium shortly and give you a full presentation. Is it okay if we defer that question for that? Thank you.
That's great. And then on the, on the cameras for the pods, I didn't realize that was just for engineering only. So if there's a, if there's a proposal to spend money to make those enhancements, will that be ARPA funded or will that be funded through?
Oh, I'm sorry. It would be ARPA funded. And this is just what we anticipate spending in the first quarter. And so we did not think we would get through design in the first quarter to the point of having to spend that additional funding.
Thank you for the answers. Appreciate, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. To wrap our hands around this, because I know you need a motion to approve for the 2021. So for those that understand that we've received 100 million of ARPA over the next years. So originally, you thought 2021 was going to be 42 million?
Yes, sir.
And the reality is, it's, with this approval, it's 28 million?
Yes, sir. So on this sheet, and we will make this available on the website so that citizens can see, we expect it to be at 28.4 million.
Okay. So that'll be the 21, assuming we approve this, this motion. So then the big picture is, but it's still budgeted, best guess for 22, county, county approved, county potentially approved expenses will be back close to this 42 million number?
Yes. When we put the 21 and 22 figures together, we're still less than that 2021 original estimate.
Right. So it's around, so for the public and for Commissioner Cruz's question, so 40 million is kind of dedicated towards county functions. So as we get into the, to the next, after the first quarter and get to this stuff, the buckets will be combined of 50 to 60 million?
Yes. And I, and I would take the opportunity to reiterate, though, that a good portion of this is public health response. And so that means your vaccines and your testing. So that really is public facing, even though it's being administered by the county and we do have the Community Navigator program. So I do think you still have quite a bit of external-facing programs to talk about through this.
Okay. That's what I was kind of trying to get, the big picture summary. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to the court backlog, part two for the sheriff, this 224,000 is just design work?
Yes, sir.
Is the 380,000 the total cost?
No, the 380,000 would be a continuation of what he's already doing associated with the backlog. So some additional deputies and a video system in interrogation rooms and things like that. So the actual projected cost for the cameras, let me find my sheet here, is roughly 2.8 million. But that is just for the equipment. That's not necessarily also for the design and installation and all of that. So we do have that additional cost for the design work that has to happen, too.
And what's life expectancy on that?
That I do not know, but I will be happy to get that answer to you.
And what does that save us?
We will need to talk with the sheriff to understand if this is approved today, we will engage with the sheriff to understand exactly how many staffing he would not need and how we can apply that in the budget process.
Okay. As we're closing out fiscal year 2021, does he have any funds in his 2021 budget, general fund budget, that could help fund this?
I will ask him. He does have salary savings, but I don't know that it would be to this extent. For the full 2.8 million.
I just have some ill feelings approving something that we don't know what the total cost is, what the benefit's going to be, what is the cost of maintaining this equipment over years? That's going to add to our budget every year for maintenance of this. This one, I have a lot of questions on.
Well, and if the commission wanted to approve everything but that today, we can go back and get that additional information and come back.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had a complete description of what this project is, because we're talking millions now. We're talking long-term costs. We're talking maintenance every year. I don't know what the savings are. So I guess I would feel much more comfortable if we would hold that and approve the rest of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If it's your will, do you want to make a motion to approve? I think, we don't have any other comments unless Commissioner Lopez has any comment. We're ready for a motion. I don't see one. So the motion originally was going to be to approve the 10.744364 number. So now the motion will be that, less the camera item.
Which is 10,519,564. But for our purposes, if the commission just wants to approve the spending plan as proposed with that modification, we can accept that.
Okay. So the official motion will be for 2021?
Approve the 2021 revised and 2022 first quarter ARPA spending plans. Apologies.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you've got that motion. And you've, and can you repeat the number, please? Again, 10 million?
That's the, that's.
That's the, that's my motion.
Thank you.
I'm glad nobody's watching this. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Motion carries. And then I think, so you will get with Sheriff's Department and get that backup material that's requested? Okay. Thank you very much.
And so Brent is going to now present our Recovery Connect. And if it's okay with commissioners, I can do the spending update through email to preserve time for you.
Okay. That'd be good. Got it. Hello, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Meisner. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. And pleased this morning to introduce to you and to the Community Recovery Connect, that is Sedgwick County's COVID Relief Community Navigator Program. As we have discussed over the past several months, this program is at its core, the, is an effort to connect individuals, businesses and nonprofits that have needs to individuals, businesses and nonprofits and have resources to address those needs that were a result of the health and economic impacts of COVID-19. This was made possible through a $500,000 award of your direct allocation of ARPA funds after competitive procurement. The Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State University was selected to receive this award and administer this program. Just to, the program itself is what's called a hub-and-spoke model, which means that PPMC will be the axis within which all of the, all the activity emanates and it's going out to a number of community partners that are specialized in terms of the services that they deliver or the communities to whom they serve. The focus areas of Recovery Connect, you received this one-page informational flyer earlier today. And basically, we're going to be focused on three areas. Making people, making businesses and nonprofits aware of the resources that might be available, as well as then providing them with access, helping them access those resources. If an individual, for instance, needs access to daycare support or childcare support so that they can get to work, this is a place that they can go to find out where those resources might be available. And then additional support going through the process, for instance, a nonprofit may be looking for funding support for a program. They can connect with Recovery Connect and can then be guided through that process, maybe some assistance with the application for the grant or the other funding support. We're pleased today that a couple of the team members that are with the Public Policy and Management Center that are heading up the program are here with us. Kelly Reed is in the audience and she is the main contact. She's the program manager for Recovery Connect, as well as Abigail Hammack, who has been doing a lot of work in terms of the strategic communication. And I'm going to show you the website in just a minute that has been developed and is now live. So word is beginning to get out to the community and we have a way to, to make this program available. One thing that I would point out to you is that the program is available to anyone in Sedgwick County, but because certain demographics, certain populations were more adversely affected due to the results of the pandemic, there are what we call conscious connections or focus on some of those targeted ZIP codes or historically underserved populations. This shows you the list, the spokes or the program partners that are involved in this. And because it's available to everyone, a very diverse group of programs and partners have been identified and have been working with PPMC to begin to prepare for the rollout of the, of the Recovery Connect program. Just to give you a quick update of where we are and where we are headed, project kickoff meetings have occurred between the county and PPMC, with PPMC and those partners that are the spokes that are going to be delivering those specialized resources. We do have a brand. Communication efforts have begun. We do have a work plan that's in process, working on communications. As I said, the website is available. And the next steps between the county and our partner, PPMC, in delivering this Community Navigator program to the community is to develop outputs and outcomes because we want to make sure that we're being effective. So we established that report card on the front end and reporting is a critical part of this because it's being funded with federal dollars. So an output might be the numbers of folks that connect to the website, the number of folks that make a phone call, the number of folks that are connected to a specific resource. And then we want to see the outcomes. Were those outcomes effective? Was providing transportation to this person the thing that bridged the gap and allowed them to re-enter the workforce? So those are the next steps that we're working on. I can show you, if I can figure out the technology, the website that is up and running right now. It's very user-friendly. I will just point out, highlight a few things. One is that this is available in a number of different languages. We typically want to make sure that communications that we put around available in Spanish and Vietnamese, those are just two of the many languages that people can use to go through and look at the program.
So what is the URL? How does someone get to this site?
Okay. Let me find.
It's currently long. We'll get another domain name that's shorter.
Okay.
Right now, since it is through the university website system, it's a little bit long, but we plan to get a shorter domain name.
Yeah, it's Wichita EDU Services, PPMC. It's a long, a long.
Yeah, I'm trying to check it out and I can't get to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold on, Brent. Commissioner Cruz.
No, I'm, after he's done, I have some comments.
As mentioned, individuals, small businesses, nonprofits can all access. I need help for my small business. I click on this, it begins to connect me to grants, microloans, other things that might be available. Kelly Reed is available by phone or by email for more specialized assistance. And then at the bottom of any one of the pages, they, the person can link back to Sedgwick County, to our ARPA funding page. And for instance, a spending plan that was just approved will be on this site, as well as other funding opportunities that might be available. And we continually update this, some of that infrastructure information that was presented earlier. So a wealth of resources. These are the first steps that have been taken. But I will tell you that from what we've seen so far, our partner has hit the ground running and we're very excited about the direction of the program. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I'll be brief. For full disclosure and to avoid any conflicts of interest, how do we, as commissioners, like I have been asked to sit on the Facts Not Fear Campaign Oversight Committee. I've also been asked to help empower Evergreen. And so I haven't disclosed those on my substantial interest form because I haven't been put on those boards yet, but I just wanted to mention that now. I do serve on other boards. It's been clear, Humankind, TCAM, all these other boards. So at what point, if say we're in a board meeting and they discuss this program, do I need to excuse myself? How do I avoid any conflicts of interest to ensure that these nonprofits who are applying for these types of grants will not be excluded?
Commissioner, anytime that you have the actual or the appearance of a conflict, that can result in a problem for that agency and their ability to procure an award through the process. So I guess I would look at it on a case-by-case basis, but if, for instance, an agency, Humankind... So I guess I would look at it on a case-by-case basis, but if, for instance, an agency, Humankind, was applying for funds for a program that we had stood up, recusal at that point, I think, would be in everyone's best interest, so.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. The other question would be, just real briefly, at what point does a person need to be, like what kind of program do they, do they have to have their program developed? Is that, what is the expectations of what your program will provide to our community? So I've given the example of a young man who wanted to set up a transportation service for those in recovery. And so at what point does he need to have his program developed as far as how many rides, how much it's going to cost? Like, what level of support are you going to provide to folks? What do they need to have before they come to you so that, you know, things are flushed out in a way that you maximize your time for all of the inquiries that you're going to receive? Would you mind going to the podium so we can hear you? Thanks.
All right. So thanks for the question, Commissioner Cruz. We're still trying to determine all of the details about how those partners will interact with, and folks on the ground will receive services from those partners. So what it sounds like is you may know someone who has a program that could be beneficial for individuals, businesses, or nonprofits in seeking support. And so that will be kind of added to the collection of resources and available resources for people that we will then be trying to connect people to. So potentially, that ride-share service could be useful in terms of supporting someone who needs, who needs rides to work, training, other types of programs.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I'm excited about this program. I've been sending a lot of people this way, so I'm glad that we have a URL that hopefully will be shorter, because when you go to Recovery Connect, it does send you to a recovery community for people trying to recover from drugs and alcohol. So I hope that we'll be able to get that fixed soon. Thank you for being here. I appreciate that.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate a little bit of information about this program. I know we put a lot of money in it, but I don't know that we've given it a very good definition at this point on where we're going. That's what my concern is. I look at these different 11 partners, and how were they selected, those 11 partners, as opposed to other partners?
From my reading of the request for proposal, the response that came back, these partners were selected, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, based on the diverse nature of the services that they deliver. A lot of these are focused on some of those historically underserved populations, but this doesn't mean that this is the list of 11 that we're going to work with from now on. Workforce has been probably the biggest issue that we've heard across all industry and including the public sector, when we had focus groups and we've solicited information. But then what keeps someone from re-entering the workforce, or what keeps this business from being able to find these, the qualified workers that they're looking for? So there are other partners out there that can participate. It's just this was the initial list that has been developed. Part of it is to provide communications and marketing to some of those populations, to provide kind of that diverse, that diverse group, if you will, that'll reach across the community.
Okay. Well, you talk about a diverse group. I know we let the contract to WSU, and now they have two different voices on this board. Isn't that kind of provide an imbalance to other organizations that may want to have something to say when three different main points are all coming out of WSU?
Not sure that, and as I said, this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is the start.
Well, let me go on. Which one of these 11 organizations is going to take care of broadband, if we have people that worry about that? Which one of these 11 organizations are going to take care of small businesses? Which one of these different 11 organizations is going to take a look at small cities and what their needs are? Which one of these 11 organizations are going to take care of venues, small venues and large venues that were impacted during COVID? Which one of these 11 organizations is going to take care of our service providers out here, who are taking care of people that are disabled, who have different needs throughout the community? I guess I just don't know where we're going and how we're going to get there, because I don't understand the organization.
Okay. To speak to a couple of the specifics, one is currently on the website, if someone, an individual needed broadband support, there's a link to getting broadband funding. Then other resources are listed on there. They may not be delivered through one of these spokes, if you will, that have been identified, but there may be a funding opportunity that's identified in a list of the other available resources. So if it's a disability-type resource, as those are being, we're being made aware of those, they can be added to the, to the website. Because it's not an exhaustive list at this point, but some of the, I think the idea with the spokes is that many of these are trusted partners in communities. So if someone wants to reach out to that agency, they can get through, through the website or through other means to communicate these resources. So I guess it's, like I say, it's, this is not necessarily an exhaustive list. There will be a number of resources listed on the website.
Well, who in Sedgwick County is providing the oversight to make sure that we're reaching out to everyone that we need to reach out to, and that we're not specializing in certain different organizations? So I understand Oaklawn Improvement District in here, they're going to have needs, but there are a lot of other improvement districts. I don't want to overbalance this with saying this one organization has a voice, and these other organizations don't have any voice at all. Who in Sedgwick County is providing that oversight to make sure that we can get the word out to everybody in Sedgwick County?
It's going through us and the Division of Finance as we stand this up, and we've been working with PPMC as well as Communications. And like I say, it's an evolving, evolving process and evolving documents. So we'll continue to bring those things out.
Okay, well, we're putting a half a million dollars in trying to make sure that we get the word out, and I don't want to make sure that we're not just throwing mud at the wall and hoping something sticks. Thank you.
Commissioner Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, is there a plan to spend another $500,000 in 2023?
No, the only thing that's been approved so far is the initial $500,000 award through 2022.
So right now, there's been no discussion about what happens after that?
If this is effective, we would probably bring to you a subsequent, make it part of a subsequent spending plan, but we're going to determine the effectiveness at this point.
When this was brought up before, I was under the impression this was more about education and vaccination and, you know, basically combat COVID more directly. This is a little bit different than what I was expecting this to look like. Again, the idea of Community Navigator, in my opinion, doesn't lend itself to things like transportation programs, or job training programs, or rent-renting to the workforce programs, or getting businesses and nonprofits, you know, assistance type of thing necessarily. This is a little bit different structure than I was expecting. And with that in mind, do we have data that, I want to make sure that the solutions are chasing the problems, that we define the problems we're trying to solve? Do we have data to show what that is exactly, that we're trying to direct these solutions towards? For example, it was just stated a minute ago, someone says, I have an idea for a transportation program, providing a service. And again, I'm not saying that that's not needed. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. But you ought to start that and say, there's a need for transportation. How do we solve that problem? By creating a transportation program. The conversation should be reversed. And so I'm just curious, have we defined the problems we're addressing with these strategies? And my second question would be this. Part of this looks like operations versus strategies or one-time spending. So I'm concerned about setting up dependency on these programs that are basically temporarily funded unless we plan on funding these long-term into the future with other funding streams. I guess I'm just curious about the long-term strategy of this, if we're going to do this.
First of all, too, your question about the types of programs that we're looking at here, vaccinations versus these other types of programs. The CARES Act was designed to be a response to the pandemic. ARPA is designed to be recovery from the effects of the pandemic. So that's the distinction between the types of things that are being delivered here. The second thing is in terms of data. We went through a number of different processes to gather data from the community. In addition to focus groups, there were surveys that were made available on the website. We had 1,500 and some responses, and they listed, and there were a lot of different ideas that people had about needs that were in the community. As we went through the focus groups, as I indicated earlier, across those six focus groups, workforce was the number-one concern across all of them. There were different reasons that people weren't re-entering the workforce. There were a number of other things in terms of continuing to have vaccinations and where those were available. A number of needs were identified, and so that was the beginning of the nucleus, if you will, for the program. How do we connect people, nonprofits, businesses with those resources that might be out there as they've identified those needs? So the core of the program right now is based on that information that we gathered. Now, if things continue to change and continue to evolve, so that's why the program is dynamic. And your third question was about sustainability, I think, of the program. The initial allocation of the $500,000 was, we decided to stand it up for a 12-month period and see if this could have some effective results in terms of connecting folks to, that had needs, and connecting those needs to those resources. If it's not effective, we don't come back. If it is effective, there's a potential that we could come back, we could shift it to another funding source at some point if we needed to. So I don't think that's a question we can answer today, but we want to determine whether this is effective. It's been demonstrated in other communities to work, so we're trying to do that here.
All right. I'll reserve the rest of my comments, because we're out of time. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, you have any questions?
At this time, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, this is a navigation effort to help people get through the ARPA complex items. So is this a, do we have to approve this?
This would just be simply to receive and file the information, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I'm making a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on December 2, 2021.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We're doing well, thank you, and commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December 2. We recommend six items for your approval. First one is the Stryker Power Load Service Plan for Emergency Medical Services, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Stryker Sales Corporation for a three-year total of $124,632. Item number two is Organizational Diversity and Inclusion Consultant for the Manager's Office, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Hicks, Carter Hicks LLC, and that's for items 1 through 11, and that's in the amount of $102,000. Item number three is the Temp Services, Medical Staff, Various Departments, as was mentioned earlier, which is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Cross Country Staffing Incorporated, doing business as Cross Country Healthcare Services, Interim Healthcare of Wichita Incorporated, and Premier Staffing Source Incorporated. And it's for the rates listed in the table, as well as the respective proposal responses, and that's for a contract period of one year with three one-year options to renew. Second item is also Temp Services. In this case, it's Disease Investigators, also funded through the American Rescue Plan Act, and this recommendation is to accept the proposals from Arnold and Associates, doing business as the Arnold Group Incorporated, or excuse me, the Arnold Group, Cross Country Staffing Incorporated, doing business as Cross Country Healthcare Services, and Interim Healthcare of Wichita Incorporated, also for the rates listed in the table and the respective proposals, again, for a period of one year with three one-year options to renew. Item number five is the InTrust Bank Arena Telescope Seating System, Division of Finance, and this is funded through the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Irwin Seating Company, based on the Omni Partners Contract, which is R191805, and that's in the amount of $139,017.40. And our final item is the OnCall Architecture and Engineering Services, Project Services. This recommendation is to accept all of the submitted proposals, and I'll just list them. Hanian Associates Architects, Schaefer Johnson Cox Frye Architecture, doing business as SJCF Architecture, L.K. Architecture Incorporated, Spangenberg Phillips Tice LLC, doing business as Spangenberg Phillips Tice Architecture, Dubois Consultants Incorporated, GLMV Architecture Incorporated, and Alloy Architecture. And this will be for the established contracted hourly rates. Also, additional information found in the respective proposals. This will be for a period that would end on October 1, 2022, but would have five one-year options to renew. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
Okay, Joe, you guys were busy.
Yes, sir.
Cleaning up this last, end of the year. So thank you for all the hard work, but commissioners have any questions about these items? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids as presented.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Thank you, commissioners.
You bet, Joe.
Thanks again to your staff for all the work they did.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Item D.
Commissioners, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items D through S, as in Sam, this morning.
Commissioners, you received the consent items, and there's been, I'll make a motion. Is there any questions on them? And I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve Consent Items D, as in David, through S, as in Sam. There's a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Motion carries. We do have exec, well, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Is there any update on legislative issues, being none, from Mike Papoun? Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Does anybody have anything to report on the committees? I don't see any. There might be, but I appreciate commissioners' sense of timing right now. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Does anybody have anything under other to share? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Executive session.
Let's just be clear, I've had a little communication. I hand this to Commissioner Cruz. First item, maybe 15 minutes? Does that work?
That'll work with our schedule.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for working.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 11 o'clock for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of acquiring property to build a county facility or facilities that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:00 a.m.
Second. Motion in a second for executive session. Don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. And we will adjourn to the conference room, boardroom, and then we'll be back, so anybody can stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many minutes, 45?
Forty-five.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome back everybody. We've returned from executive session. No action taken. And so I will now hand the next executive session back to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until, what is that, 11:50 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation. And that the Board of County Commissioners returned to this room from executive session at 11:50.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. And we will return here in 50 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome back. We give you a return from executive session and no action taken. So is there any other business that needs to come in front of the commission today? So I don't see any. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in, and we will stand adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.